We'll call a meeting to order for the Wilmer City Council special meeting for Monday, April 29. One adjustment to the agenda as presented is we will have a public comment period immediately following the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Mesky.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Osmus.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have three members of the public who have made it known that they wish to speak. It was not on our agenda that it was a public, it would be public comment. And so tonight's public comment is limited to one of the items that are on the agenda. If the items are not on the agenda, then, because this is a special meeting, so you can only speak to items directly on the agenda. I believe I have that correct, right, Mr. Scott?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay. First, Mr. Jay Lawton, please tell us if you reside in the city or outside of the city.
I'm Jay Lawton. I live at 424th Avenue Southwest. I'm here to address the new city office project. And I, first of all, I want to thank all the folks who've been working on that. I know it's a big deal, a lot of work. I have a couple of issues. One, and I don't know where we are on this, but when the fire station site came up, I, and when I saw the site plan, I, aside from that not coming out of the tax base, I couldn't find anything good about that. And the other thing is, whatever happened to the utilities, which is part of the city, it seems to me that we should be putting all of the city entities together in one location. But I strongly believe that we should use one of the facilities downtown in the current general area where the city offices are. I know that the city office is in bad shape. It's got a lot of problems. I talked to people who work there, and they go home and they spend two, three hours trying to get crud out of their lungs. But I strongly feel that the location should be basically where it is now, down in that And again, if we could include the utilities, I think that makes much more sense than having two separate offices. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Mr. Joe Riddler, please state if you live in the city or outside of the city, please.
Good evening, Council. Joe Riddler, living in Wilmer. I'd like to comment on your city hall project. Appreciate the efforts that you're all going forward with. I would like us to slow down. I feel this is getting ramrodded down our city. I talked to a lot of elderly people in our community. At first, the discussion was this was coming out of the checkbook, out of the city hall meeting, or the meeting we had at the fire hall. Mayor, you said now we were going to assess and we're going to be taxed on this. There's a lot of different things going on, and I think you're having this special meeting. You're kind of wincing at me like you're not agreeing with me, but I talked to other people in this community, and they're like, there's a lot of things that are going down the pipeline, folks. It's going quick, and there's a lot of uncertainty. And the thing that I worry about, the people that built this city are a lot of elderly people on fixed income. We got that school ramrodded down us, and the extra money we're paying a month. I'm telling you, if my father was alive today, he would have had to sell his house. Any more taxes. There's a lot of people that are on fixed income that don't have the discretionary dollars. So I'm telling you, this special meeting is tonight is about item six on this meeting. Please, slow down. I'm telling you. I get to kick Kathy out of your meeting. You went around, you were round robin, did what do you like about your meeting? To be real honest, why didn't you ask what don't you like? Because you were trying to lead everybody to the promised land, but you never gave them an out to what they didn't dislike. So please, slow down. There are people watching what you're doing. When you put brick and mortar up, it's forever. So I'm just asking you, and I know I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of people in my neighborhood. Slow down. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Mr. Ron Christensen, state if you reside in the city or outside of the city. I think we all know the answer, but... Thanks for being here tonight.
Ron Christensen, City of Wilmer, still. They'll live here. My comments are on the city hall decision also. I and a lot of other people, as Joe stated, think that if we're going to have a city hall, and it has to be downtown, you should remodel where you're at. It's a fine location for downtown. You could put a Skyway from the city hall over to the auditorium. There's plenty of offices over there that could be utilized if you need more space. However, if it doesn't have to be downtown, there are several other options. One of them is the community center. I think I spoke to several of you after last fire hall meeting and showed you a map of the community center. We have, the city owns like five to seven acres there. You could put three, four city halls out there. It's across from Robins Island, the center point, focal point, coming in from north of Wilmer. We have a lot of things going on at Robins Island, and you could have a community center and a city hall, which was the mayor's intention when he budgeted money for both of them. I strongly urge you to consider that. There's several other places in town, too. I know someone had mentioned the old REA location, up on a hill overseeing the city in Robins Island. But I would ask you to consider the community center location for a city hall, community center combination. There's lots of places the community center could be relocated while that's under construction. You'd more likely demolish it and build, both of them are attached to each other. But please consider that. It's at a focal point of Wilmer. You come in on the highway, easily to find for people that are visiting Wilmer. And we have the room, and it's not going to cost us a dime, just demolition of the old building there. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. So we didn't have it advertise the public process, so is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak? I haven't, I generally don't do this, but we didn't have it public, so I want to make sure if anybody's here and want to speak that they're given the opportunity. Sheen and hearing none, and we'll move to item number four on the agenda. At this point, I'll turn that item over to Councilmember Mesky as the Chair of Labor. Councilmember Mesky.
All right. In your packet, we had a request by, as you are aware, we had three employees who took the early retirement option as we were sunsetting that. In your packet, that 90-day retirement request, it would take it to June 30, 2019. However, there have been changes with para, and one of the employees has requested that we consider an early retirement to May 31, because changes in para will allow, will actually take away some of their survivor benefits. And so we're requesting that we allow the employees that have opted for the early retirement to be able to retire early of a May 31, 2019 retirement date instead of the June 30, so they do not lose ground again with their survivor benefits from para. Comes from the Labor Committee as a motion.
Are you introducing that motion?
Yep, I'll introduce it.
Second.
Most of them made and seconded to change the retirement window from 90 days to 60 days that would allow employees at their discretion, I'm assuming?
Yeah, we did not want to get into, there's two additional employees, but we were not going to ask about their survivorship benefit.
So yours is just to make it an open-ended, if they choose to retire on the 31st, they may?
That could affect, like it says on your packet, it could be up to two additional employees that may be eligible.
Okay. Mr. Holland or Ms. Beckman, any comments from you, or are you good? Discussion from the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no cost to the city for this. This is all the pension.
Correct.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Mr. Scott, as our city attorney, you've briefed this.
Yes, Mayor. Members of the council, talked to Brandon Fitzsimmons in our office, and we jointly put this resolution together.
With that, there's been a motion made and seconded to consider retirement date change, allowing employees to retire at 60 days instead of the 90 days. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Mesky.
Second item that we had is at our last special meeting, when we were dealing with just labor issues, and specifically how, as we move forward, the city administrator, we had a job description, and we had asked general consideration for changes on that. We received those. You should have a draft of a strike through of what that job description looks like in a proposal with stricken language and some new reference to a couple additional tasks as we talked about. So I'd introduce and move to approve the job description as presented.
Second.
Most of them have been made and seconded to recommend city administrative job description changes as noted in your packet. I just want to thank the committee for their work on this. I know you guys worked hard on it, and thank you for the work that you did. I know there were some minor changes, but I think they clearly reflect the changed duties with the change of some of the responsibilities since Mr. Holland has been here. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Councilmember Mesky.
The other thing we were asked at that special meeting was for you to consider a recruiting company that would be looking at that, and we did review all of those options that we had, and we are recommending that we select Baker Tilly as a recruiting firm. And I would offer that as a motion.
I'll second that.
Most of them made and seconded to consider a contract with Baker Tilly for the city administrator recruitment tasks for replacing our current city administrator. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Councilmember Mesky.
The next piece, I guess I'm going to actually ask HR Director Beckman if she would maybe summarize kind of where we're at for the searching and how we're recruiting and how we're handling that particular piece. So the next one was for information only, but I know things have happened since we were at our meeting, but we are in the process of trying to select an interim, and we're relying on the expertise of our HR director to help us in that piece.
So, excuse me, I did obtain a list of available interim administrators from the League of Minnesota Cities. So we have that as a starting point, but as we discussed at our committee meeting, that is just a contact list. It's not any list that has been vetted or background checked or anything like that in any way. It's purely just a contact list. So the next step will be kind of narrowing it down to see who is interested and available from that list, but also we would recommend that you post the interim opening. I've also been told, excuse me, there were several people who had made contact with elected officials that were possibly interested in the opening, so if we could just post the interim opening on our website and on Indeed, we can just collect applicants that way and use that as our applicant pool.
So are you looking for a motion to have, to post that position?
Yes.
I would enter that motion.
Second.
Most of them are made and seconded to...
Post the...
What's it? Post the interim job description?
Interim position, yeah.
Yep, the interim position. It would just be the same job description as the city administrator, but it would just say interim on it and have the dates set for how long the period would be.
Most of them made and seconded to post an interim job, interim city administrator position with the current job description. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Just, thank you, Mayor Calvin. Just seeking clarification that you still would be working with the League of Minnesota Cities on that list in addition to posting it?
Yes, yep. Well, and then what I would do is when I contacted the interim list, I could then direct them to apply if it was something they actually did want to pursue. Just because they're on this list doesn't mean they're available and interested in coming to Wilmer, so that would be the next step, is they would need to actually officially apply for the position.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Mesky.
Well, I'll point out, we talked about a timeframe, and we're looking at a six-month timeframe, but having a hard, fast timeframe for an interim is very difficult to do. As we learned our last one, we thought we were going to have for four and ended up having them for eight. Also, the job description for that, it may be true that it'll be posted the way the job description is, but as you are aware, we did look at projects that we'd like an interim to work on, which are also included in your packet. We did solicit from all of the department chairs, the projects that are currently under those particular headings that are pressing issues, and we have a small list of projects that an interim would probably address. I think, looking at these, they're probably more than six months' worth of projects, so I would imagine that now that we've collected these, the Labor Committee will probably whittle that down to what seems reasonable in consultation with our HR director. So although the job description is as it is currently written, I think that's what you're saying, is that that's the mechanism you'd like to do to get some candidates in there. The timeframe is going to be six months, but again, that could be a little bit longer or shorter, depends on how that goes. And that list, the project list, as you see in front of you is our initial attempt. If there are things that you think of that are not on this list, please get that to our HR director as quickly as possible.
Okay. So I'm assuming then that you're planning on this being a 40-hour-a-week position?
We had discussed, the only thing we discussed was at least three days a week was the only set thing we had discussed at the committee.
Additional discussion. I'm going to speak against the motion. As the mayor, if you want to take the gavel, you can. But I'm going to speak against the motion simply because I don't think the scope of work has been fully vetted, and the work hours have not been fully vetted. Former Councilmember Christensen and I worked very diligently on the last interim city administrator project, and so the council can take the direction they wish here, but I think the scope needs to be defined, work, hours of work need to be defined, and the compensation plan needs to be defined. There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the job description for the interim city administrator. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. A motion carries. Next, Four Seasons Shelter at Robins Island. Mr. Baumgartner.
Mayor, a member of the councils, tonight before you, I'm bringing a request from the Park and Rec Board to approve Plan D from the PowerPoint that Richard's going to put together for you tonight. As we all know, that the DNR and us have been working together on a legacy grant, and the Park and Rec Board has reviewed several plans and construction designs for this shelter, and the Park and Rec Board is making their recommendation again to approve Plan D and to seek additional funding for this. And also, I'd like to add that the grant deadline is going to be June 2020. So during the park board on the 17th, there was a motion from the board to support Plan D for the Four Seasons Shelter at Robins Island and seek additional funding for this project. It's the recommendation from the Park and Rec Board to have council support Plan D and to reallocate and seek funds for, budget dollars for this project. Some of the issues that are going to come up with this is finding additional funding for this project. Financial impact was, where does that additional funding come from? Some options would be from the Public Improvement Revolving Plan. That is a plan that must be paid back in five years, the excess funds from 2018, and the Early Retirement Reserve Funds. The other alternative is we can seek different shelter options or other funding options. So it's a recommendation, or in the motion tonight for this council to approve Plan D and direct staff to reallocate funds for this project. And I'd like to turn it over to Richard now. He's going to go through the presentation quickly and kind of give you an outline of what the plans would be.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm going to go through part of the PowerPoint very fast. It's similar to something you saw in December. The, let's see, which one is it? Oh, okay. The background, when we were hired, we were asked to work with the current master plan for the Robins Island that was developed. That evolved out of a series of different items. It began with Vision 2040. Each of these had a great deal of citizen input. Vision 2040, one of their charges was to have more things to do for people in Wilmer, to facilitate recruitment of people for Wilmer. The second one was a master plan park for the city. It was, once again, community input, and it was an approved document for that. Out of that, the Robins Island master plan was approved and documented with additional input. One of the first successful projects of this was the Robins Island Playground. The funding, it was a phenomenal project. I don't think 10 years ago, that could have been, couldn't have scratched the surface of doing that in Wilmer. But I think it's, I've never heard a negative thing about it. It's been very positive. This last year, with support from the whole community, a large number of volunteers, the Celebrate Light of the World was successful on Robins Island. I think there's a great deal of enthusiasm that that continue. So this is the background, this is the basis that we started, we were hired. The master plan, this is, the goal is to facilitate activities. Wilmer sells itself as a city where the lakes begin, and yet there's hardly a public venue in the community except the college cafeteria and the golf club upstairs, where you really can see water with an activity. The encouragement would be to have things to do here in the summer, like it has in the past, but expand that, canoeing, paddleboating, kayaking, swimming, hiking, disc golf, maybe some others. But some of those are going, but they would also increase the others. It's also going to be a four-season. The goal is to facilitate outdoor activities all year long. The gathering and meeting facility would be used, obviously, around the calendar. Winter activities would increase. It could be sledding on a hill, snowshoeing, skiing, skating, as well as hiking. These are the uses. Starting last March, we developed a program, and finally, last week, the Park Board at their board meeting did approve, discussed it, and came up with a solution. The main parts of the park shelter, one was a community room, about 1,400 square feet. That's about 250 feet larger than the recent building that was put on the Historical Society, but it's just about the same as the Gruyenshuisen Shelter. Public restrooms, trying to duplicate, it's actually a little less square footage than the two buildings they have there now, but they would be a better quality. The one area that the discussion is really centered on was number three. The name was changed rather than, to a basic park multipurpose space. This could encompass future staff offices, programming, warming house, additional meeting area, but I think the Park Board wants to be able to do the programming that was planned originally. They aren't, they did not come to the record that they wanted to start something immediately, but that would come as time goes on, when there's a defined program that they would like to try to do. But they would want the facilities to be able to accommodate this, whether it's a contractor or it is a city program, but they'd want the area to go along with. And the program is basically the same as what we've been talking about. The master plan of the building has three main components. One is a community room, where you can see the water. It looks out over the lake, the beach, and the east side of the park. It has the multi-use facility on the east side, which could see the majority of the land activities in that part of the park. And that really is the main change. The restrooms and such are in the back. Site plan, the plan has been moved uphill from where the master plan had it. There is unstable soil all the way in, so this would actually come in where the first couple trees are. And the road would be moved slightly over. We, I reviewed this onsite with Stuart Crosby, and he's very comfortable with this. The road would come in there, the basic concept of the road stays the same. The initial plan that Bolton Mick has worked on is reflecting this. The, one of the key parts would be areas toward the lakes and out of the community room for gatherings. The one to the west, we're naming it the Lake View, but the one to the south is more of the beach, and then the one at the west, at the east, is an entrance. We were visualizing something larger visible there, maybe a fire pit or something, if that would work out, but there'd be something visible as you come into the building, which would be a signpost from the highway. The floor plan, this is the floor plan that was done a year ago, and the Park Board chose the D, which we'll get to a little bit later, but they are also, they like this one, the one exception, is the area that we have on the, on the east side would be called a multi-use facility, and it would be just a big room, a space that could be used and modified as time goes on for different functions. The main room, the gathering space, would seat approximately 100 people at tables. We'd have access to the outside. Last summer, there was a request, we did the cost estimate on this, that it was more than the money that was appropriated. We did a smaller plan, eliminating the multi-use area and making the meeting facility smaller to be right into the budget of the money that was appropriated. But there's, nobody has thought that having the meeting room smaller would facilitate and make it a usable facility. Then recently, this is the plan that the Park Board endorsed, Plan D. The site plan is evolving very similar to the other. It was closed, squared off in the front. I had an additional venue for warming house or other uses in the front there, and that added the extra square footage in the cost. This was a floor plan of that showing the room in the front. The restrooms and the community room is, are really identical. We've changed the shape some, but the shape would be changed probably in the other plan Then they had, they had an option, too. We could eliminate that multi-use venue, and this is one that they didn't like. They didn't, they wanted the extra space, either in A or preferably in D, or in E. D. A building section, we have a simple sloped roof, with the sloped roof in the gathering space. We have an area on top of the hallway and interior restroom that could have mechanical space and some storage on the upper level, so the mechanical equipment would be, would be located there. These estimated project costs, A is the original one. We adjusted these prices for inflation to cover this year's building season. B was a smaller one that was working with that original appropriation. D is the one that is larger, adding an additional space used for warming, a second community area. And E was a smaller one. The Park Board did not recommend B or E. They liked the bigger one, but the other one was acceptable. And then a cost summary of each of the two that they were recommending, A and D. The building is the first line, the trails, plaza, furnishing equipment, and design and engineering. The last four of those items were items relating to the grant, the grant money that was applied for earlier and were assigned to this building project. The lower part, sources of funding, there's the legacy grant, the same on each one of them. The city's matching grant is the same on each of them. The city's matching grant is the same in each of them. The, the added budget is what would need to be added. I guess the, um, the budget in A has never been resolved, it has never balanced, but in A and D, uh, is the one that we have here. It would be 649,000 for A or 719,660 for, for D. And then in the budget, there's also 75,000, 15,000, 17,000 was taken away from it, so there's 58 remaining in the budget. And then the budget for A and D are matching here. The, um, utility connections, we, we started, this was connecting to the existing sewer and water. Since we did that originally, the Public Works has mentioned that the water service, that the existing park water service is not very good and it should really come from the main across the street, across the island, uh, including replacing that fire hydrant. We have not included that with this because that really, if, if it's done, it should also relate to other things, other items on the park. It should be part of the bigger infrastructure work for the whole park, which is, has been Possible public sources, this is what Rob referred to. It could be the excess funds from 18, uh, early, uh, retirement reserve fund. It could also be the public improvement revolving plan. And that's, Rob did mention those. Really the discussion, uh, the things that would need to happen to keep it on schedule is one is to approve a plan with changes or something, approve a funding for a plan and authorize proceeding with developing construction documents and proceeding with, with getting bids. Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. It, uh, thorough as always, so we appreciate you putting this document together and laying it out the way you did. So council, any, any discussion points? This is a special meeting of the council, so I will not require a motion before we have the discussion so that we can have an open discussion and if a motion comes out at that time. I'm assuming you're looking for three motions, is that what you're looking for? Cause you got action one, action two, action three? Or you wanted them all in one motion?
One motion.
Okay. Discussion of the council. Councilmember Nelson.
On your project cost summary, um, I know that a grant entails more than just the four season shelter. Um, and I don't remember the specifics of the other things that we have to do in order to receive the grant. Is the figure that's in there for the trails and the plaza, um, does, I guess the question is the project cost summary cover all of our requirements of the grant?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you.
And we'd be working with Stuart to do, as a team together. We've talked with him and he's on board.
Okay. So is it the four season shelter, trails and plaza are those, is that the requirement of the grant?
Yes.
It's just those three things now?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Additional discussion?
That was removed. The boardwalk was removed, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
It's been tabled. I think it's still something the park board wants to do, but not, it's not scheduled for this.
But the DNR allowed us to remove it from the grant at this time, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional discussion? Councilmember Mesky.
The other items for consideration listed on here on your project cost summary?
Yep.
Are those incorporated in the cost here or those would be additional costs as we knock those off?
This, the site removal, where, uh, we have not included that for the Gruyensdriesen. That would come after this is done. There's been no discussion of what, what to do with that property. Uh, utility improvements, we're looking to the existing sewer and water that is right in the vicinity there. After, we started, Public Works mentioned that the, the water service that comes from the highway is, across that island is bad, but there's a very good one, a large line across the island. When that's done, it should be, it, it fits probably better with the road construction when it's, when it's done, but that was not included in ours here. We did add 35,000 for tables and chairs and some, even something for some audio, video. And I, we had a conversation, but I, I think that's, and there is an allowance. Uh, I, I think it should be plenty to do what you need to do now. We don't see any big audio, uh, audiovisual equipment here, but we have wiring, wireways, so it could be added if this is something wanted in the future. I believe public, I believe the, uh, recreation department has some equipment that they actually could, could use here when it opens. You know, we have, uh, you know, I guess the, we'd have wiring to get the phone in the building and wireways through the building, but we don't have any phone system. There's been no conversation how that would fit in with the city, city systems and computer systems. I'm not, uh, we have it wired, so you could have, uh, a lot, uh, high-tech meeting if that's was a wish in the future.
I'm, I'm still digesting this, I guess. I'm, I'm looking at, original plan was at 538,000 for a 1,920 square feet building and now we're talking about a project that, that could be in excess of 1.2 million dollars and adding to 4,340 square feet, which is actually more than doubling what the original budget was. So I'm still collecting information, but that seems like a very vast expansion of the project.
And I was not around when the application went in and I've talked with Stuart, I, I keep put it in. I think there was an idea that they wanted a four season shelter and they, and they put some numbers down. They didn't have a data of, of what, what building would encompass.
Right.
Or the size.
Sure.
Councilmember, uh, Swantus.
Thank you. I, I would correct a number that you referenced and that was 1.2. This is actually 1.5, 1,558,660 dollars plus then we need to add in the other considerations that you just referenced. Do you have any idea what those costs would come to?
I believe, uh, Bolton and Mink did a, uh, study for the sewer and water, or I think Public Works has it. I, I believe, um, was it 80,000 to 100,000 or something?
Councilmember Swantus, yeah, total would be 80 to 100. Um, you could do the water, cause the sewer would be going to the existing sewer line. You could do the water for, for under 50, about 45,000.
Yeah.
So without including the 80 to 100,000 dollars, what is being proposed is 182% of what was approved or recommended as a budget? Help me wrap my arms around the idea that this would be acceptable to the council.
I think the, uh, you know, when we go through there, the, the trails, the plaza, uh, and those others were, were, were just taken from the grant. I, I think the, where they were going to be used, it wasn't clear. I think that money can be worked. I don't know that we need to spend that much amount of money on those portions. I'm not aware that you can't use some of that even for the matching funds for the building, but, uh, that would be a, a question to, to clarify.
So the original project was 856,000 dollars. We thought that we were getting a four season porch, the trails and the plaza. And now we're at twice the cost and we don't have the four seas, uh, excuse me, we don't have the trails and we do not have the plaza? Or we do have the plaza?
Yeah.
But we don't have the trails.
Yes, we have the trails. They're in here.
Missing the walkway.
I'm talking about the boardwalk.
Well, we don't have the boardwalk, that's correct. That was changed to, to trails around the building.
I, I will just speak that I just cannot approve this and I don't know that our constituents, I can only imagine what they are going to say in my phone that will light up, um, in regard to this. We've got a lot of projects going on with the local option sales tax and with the city hall building and, and, uh, I, I'm sorry, I just can't do this. My recommendation would be that we go with Plan B. Uh, we have a nice four season, uh, building there. It's 1,920 square feet. You think about the size of a beautiful home. 1,920 square feet is a lot of space. It still gives us a nice meeting space or community space. It gives us a restaurants, or excuse me, the restrooms that we need, but, um, it would be very nice to have 4,340 square feet, but, um, that's not in my budget. If I, if I were running a company and I'm, and I have my staff come in and I've assigned a project to them and they come in twice what the budget is, um, I, I just can't imagine that. And that, that's what we're doing here. I'm, I'm sorry, but I appreciate all the work and effort that's gone into this by the committee and I'm sure intentions are very good and it would be wonderful to have these things, but, um, well, I've, I've said my piece.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I want to ask a question about the, the space in the floor plan, um, but I want, I, I just want to respond to a couple of the comments. So when this grant was written, there was an acknowledgement that we were probably going to be short money at that time with that. There was not a design. It was a concept that was brought forward and the work that's been done on this, and so I think we need to be careful that we aren't, um, passing judgment on how we got where we are. This is a lot of money. I'm not sure where I'm at with, with the designs on there, but this grant was written in 2015 and so this has been a long time in the process. And so I think we need to be careful of passing judgment on how we got to where we are right now with it. And, um, I think there, the grant money should be spent correctly and I think we need to look at what, what we need here, um, at this location. And so I'm just looking for some additional clarity on the design itself, the, and I'd like to hear why the park board brought forth option, um, D. But in particular, um, the space that's in approach D has an office rental area. I get the warming community room. Um, I know that was part of the, um, the Robins Island Task Force of looking at how can we use this space 12 months out of the year, but, um, can you help me understand what the park board was talking about with having office and rental and who would be renting to and would we be collecting rent? And those are the questions that went into my head when I saw the drawing. So if you could, if you both want to address it, I don't know, but.
Yeah.
When we met as a park board, we basically, I came up with the question, do we need to have a programming shelter or a non-programming shelter? And that's where kind of approach D and E were at, um, because of the size of the building that the park board wanted to have. And so we had lengthy discussion on if we wanted to have programming and when they talked about programming, um, for the future, they, they really talked about building this building for the future. And so, and the programming may not come like instantly, but they want to be able to have it for the future. So it'd be everything from renting kayaks to paddle boards, that would be in that one section, um, that we would rent it as staff or we could contract that out to a vendor that wants to use it. And then the other room could be for the, and then when the seasons happen, that room then turns into the skate rentals or snowshoeing. And then we would have a warming house area also for those people to put on, um, the snow shoes and skates and head outside. In the winter, or in the summertime, that, um, smaller room would be more designated at, either as an office space or a separate meeting room.
Councilmember, fairly followed by Councilmember Osmas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The important thing is that we have a area for a community room and good bathrooms. Park board, they went off to the future and wanted office space for staff and like you said, rentals for kayaks and skates during the winter and then have a area for a warming house. To me, the city shouldn't get involved in that and I, you even said you don't want to get into rentals. I mean, kayaks, you can contract out with a, a company and they'll bring trailers there and rent that stuff out. Important thing is to have a space for the community if they want to rent it or have a, a meeting and, and the bathrooms. This other stuff is just way too much and this is getting to be worse than the bus shelter that the transit system built downtown, which is ridiculous. The only other thing is look at the construction.
Mm-hmm.
And do it stick-built instead of, uh, all concrete block.
So. We are proposing a wood frame building with Masonry veneer.
Okay. And it's still that much?
Pardon?
And it's still that much?
You know, I think the, the issue with park buildings, they, they really are, in general, they're, they're not a low-cost building. The plumbing, you know, the expensive rooms are the bathrooms and they're, that's a third of the building. The public areas need to be durable because park buildings have, are, are used roughly. So, uh, if we use, uh, you know, drywall, we'd often put particle board behind it or something to reinforce it, just to make it so it's hard to kick through. Uh, I think the, um, we, we do need some special finishes in the large room to absorb sound so, so you can have a conversation. Uh, it can't all be hard surfaces and we're thinking the floor will be hard just for the sake of like a, a concrete floor, just to make it durable, easier to clean. It may be a colored, colored concrete, it'd be a little special, but it would be a, it's a, it's a good durable surface, but they're also all very alive surfaces acoustically. So we do have to have the upper parts, some, some absorbing material.
It's still a lot of money. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmas, followed by Councilmember Mesky.
Thank you. Um, in defense of the Park and Rec Board, I do believe that they were building for the future. Is that their job? I think so, because I don't think at this point we should be shortsighted. And I do think that this building will get used. I would just, I'm a visual person, so I would, I'd need to put it into perspective. So I'm thinking of the, the space at Rice Park, that shelter. In that community room, what is, what is that space?
Do you have the area?
Yep. Uh, the shelter, the rental room area is 21 by 28 feet, so roughly 600 square feet.
Okay. How does that compare to?
This room is like, uh, 1.6 times larger.
The small version.
Or two, two point, uh, 2.5, two and a half times larger. This room is two and a half times larger than that room.
Than the one at Rice Park?
Yes.
Uh, on D?
On D?
No, the, on D, it's two.
Oh, you mean the small room in front?
Um, the community room in B, the first smaller, um.
On, on D, the small room by the.
Nope. Nope. Go to, go to B.
Okay, B, okay.
The smaller footprint, the smaller.
Okay.
In that community room that you said would possibly seat 100, I'm just trying to visually see.
B would, B would not seat 100.
Okay.
A, the others all would seat 100.
Okay. B's smaller.
That's over 50.
Okay.
The room is about half size. It's about half the square, half the area.
Of what's at Rice?
No, it would be just a little larger, it'd be larger than Rice. About, um, maybe 20, 15% larger. A little lar- it would be 15 to 20% larger.
I'm done.
Councilmember Mesky, followed by Councilmember Nelson, followed by Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilmember Plom, followed by Nelson.
I remember the conversations when we got the grant and I think there is a difference between a need and a want. And I think, I mean, I remember having the, the conversation and discussion that we probably would have more money in here, but I did not ever, in my wildest dreams, think it would be over two times of what we talked about. But as I look at this, I would concede then if what we, the original scope of what we needed, um, I would even say I would be willing to look at approach E, which takes away, again, some of those want pieces, but makes a larger community room with a corridor that could be used as a warming area. That was the, that was the framework and that's about. That was the framework, and that's about $300,000 more than the original project. But for me, that's about where my appetite would end.
Councilmember Plomon followed by Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was a perfect segue. Thank you, Mr. Mesky. Yeah, I just, you know, all the plans are really cool. I think they're visionary, and I think the end result would be an amazing building that could be used for a lot of great things. However, I think we owe it to the taxpayers to do this right and to ensure that we're being as responsible with our money and our budget as possible. With that said, you know, I like the flexibility of the other options, but given the original parameters and focus for what we were trying to do with this building, but then also maybe possibly allowing for some flex use or some changes in the future, the added square footage that Approach E would put on there would, you know, we'd be stretching our budget, but it's not quite blowing the budget away like a few of the other options. And I think when it comes to offices or programming or whatnot, you know, those are items that, you know, we can maybe discuss when having the City Hall discussion, or, you know, I don't know if that fits in there. But like Mr. Mesky mentioned, and it's exactly what I was thinking, my thoughts and my desire to approve anything beyond Approach E, pretty slim. But again, I do appreciate all the planning and the options that are there, because without options, you don't have really anything. So, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
I keep going back between B and E. And I remember the concepts that we had talked about, about having an outdoor, I think there's an outdoor handicap or access from the outside for a handicap bathroom, talking about changing facility and some of those other discussions that we had. And my question was going to be, and I can support Councilmember Plomon and Councilmember Mesky's concept of Approach E, but did you look at a design? I mean, the space almost seems like you can't, can you downsize E somewhere in between B and E? Or is, in order to accommodate the number of bathrooms, et cetera? I'm just curious with?
Under all these plans, one of the single-ocument restrooms would have a door to the outside. You know, even Option A, we could make that work. We haven't changed the plan, but it is shown on the plans for both D and E.
But not B? B does not, does it?
We could make it work on A, all four of them could have that feature. We can arrange, make that work. So I think any of the plans can have a single-ocument restroom to the outside, which would be beneficial if this building is locked during the summer. We're assuming in any winter use, it's always going to be, the outdoor doors for the restrooms are locked. They have to come in the building.
The additions to Approach E, the additional costs would be the same more than likely for Approach E as they would Approach D or Approach B, correct? And you're talking about the other items for consideration?
Yeah.
Those are basically going to stay the same regardless?
I think that's right. And I think the prices we did there, we just took those off that grant application. You know, I'm not sure we need the amount that we're showing for the plaza and the trails, all of that there. But we've just used that budget, right? Because that's what's in the grant application.
I know we've had a conversation about that at Finance. I don't know if Mr. Okens wants to speak to that, but I thought those amounts were set, that we had to do those things at a set amount.
Okay.
But I don't know if you want, if he's willing to answer that.
Mr. Okens, Finance Director?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, any changes in the grant document would require prior written approval by the state.
I'm hesitant to make a motion because I don't think we have all of the dollars yet. I'm agreeing with Councilmember Mesky and Councilmember Plomon that Approach E is probably as far as we can go. And so, just like clarification on, you know, the three items that were listed here is to, is there a way to approve just the concept E and ask for that actual budget information to come back to our meeting next week?
You certainly could ask that. Councilmember, are you, you good?
I'm asking that question, so.
Okay, Councilmember Nelson has a question. She's looking for an answer either from Finance Director or from our Park and Recs Director or City Administrator, one of the three of you. Answer the question.
I think we can bring back Approach E to the Park and Rec Board.
No, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about bringing it back to a council meeting next Monday with the actual costs. Because some, I know that you have been talking, projected costs. Thank you.
Isn't that in one of the slides here? There's A, B, D, and E.
Right, but the other items for consideration, some of those are going to have to be done if we do, and they are not in the budget, correct?
We do have the wiring for, you know, the phone, the public address, and things are in there. We have movable furniture. That was a mistake. We didn't show that as a line item. But the road improvements are not included here.
The utility in particular would have to be done in order for the building to be done. They're not.
We are hooking up to the existing sewer and water that are available for those existing buildings now. That's, there's a fire hydrant, we're doing that. It's just that after we did the original estimate, probably works deemed it's much, it'd be really, this is the time to hook up to the other system. And if we do that, if there's talk of an additional restroom in the vicinity of the playground, and something on the top of the hill, it would make sense that that is all incorporated together, when they're doing those utilities.
If I'm hearing you correctly, you're sort of saying that's outside of this project?
That's what we were trying to do, is work with the utilities that are right there, and that's what these costs are based on. The time to do that would be if indeed that road is redone, which has been discussed, not funded.
Councilmember Schwantes followed by Councilmember Fernando, Councilmember Alvarado, I apologize. And then I'm getting close to wanting a motion on the table to continue discussion. This is a work session, so I'm allowing a little bit, I'm not, I'm sorry, a special meeting, so I'm allowing a little bit of liberty, but I think we're getting to the point where we need to start honing down in on a motion. Councilmember Schwantes followed by Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think some of the conversation we just had might be related to what I was going to note. For those who don't have the packet in front of them, Approach E, the cost of that is $894,000. So assuming that it is the additional $80,000 to $100,000, we're still talking about a million-dollar project. So I'll be very interested in seeing what those numbers come back as.
Councilmember Alvarado.
I'm liking either a smaller footprint or E. Robins Island is a gem, and the thing that makes it a gem is its natural beauty. And I can understand that it'd be cool to have, and I like the idea of looking towards the future. We have to think about tomorrow. We have to have things for our constituents to enjoy and take advantage of. But at this point, I think we have to scale it back, put that into future planning, and consider what we're dealing with, where we're building, and how that's going to impact that area. So I'm thinking that way, and my thinking was, would be to, like, I like the maybe E as maybe, as big as it gets at this point. Thank you.
City Administrator Holland.
Thank you, Mayor.
You've got to remember, when you're over on that side, you've got to do something to get my attention.
I know.
Over here, I'm pretty good, but over this way, I'm not quite so good.
I would just make one comment. You know, I talked with Rob and Mr. Engen earlier in the year, and, you know, a lot of these projects, especially recreational, you have, like, it was said earlier, what you want and what you can afford, right? What you need. So a lot of times, what I've done is I've bid it out in different ways. And I might make the recommendation that we bid it out with two different buildings, one building that you think is going to be affordable, one that you think probably costs too much. But you're interested to see what that figure would come back. So you could do a D and an E and wait for those numbers, those hard numbers, come back, and then you could select between those two. You may find that the difference between those two is not significant or is extremely significant. But then you have a realistic view of what you're spending, and I think that you're being fiscally sound with that. So that's something that I think that you need to consider. The other thing is sometimes you bid out a building and then you say that some of these things are called alternatives, one, alternatives two, such as an outdoor fire pit or the, you know, the extra trail or anything, or the materials such as, you know, you could build it as a stick building, and alternate one is that you do it with concrete, you know, blocks. So those are some things to consider, but simplistic way to say is that you make a motion that both D and E are bid out and then brought back to the council for selection. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Looking for a motion. I'm sorry, Councilmember Mesky.
That's one approach. I suppose another approach should be, if I do this at my home, I put a budget together and then I project, if it comes in at that number and I make cuts as I need to for that project, I'd be willing to have the money attached to Project E, but that would include all of the contingency plans that are off to the side. Therefore, the budget's locked at 894, and if you have to make cutbacks, you could do that with the size of the bathrooms, because I see those are expanded from B to E, or the connecting hallway. I mean, you can make adjustments to make up for that $80,000 to $100,000 shortfall. Just thinking aloud, that might be another approach if we just set a top figure of the budget, and then you can conform the building to that. Because between B and E is frankly, it's just a, it's a scale.
And you were saying B, Boy?
Yes.
And E, Edward?
Correct. You were talking, B, not D. Talking B, not E, or D, not, no D. B.
He isn't Boy.
B and E. Yes. You're using the size of the community room. That's, or the bathrooms, I see that they change as well. Because, I mean, if we're looking at, I don't know what those contingencies are adding up, and I know we'd explore those, but the other way to approach that would be, set the budget and then those, you know what the costs are, and you can adjust that building up or down. I mean, the difference is what, between a 3100 square feet in E versus a 1920 square foot in B? And? I think all of those other items to consider, you know, I'm not, you know, I think most of those are in there just for information. I don't know that there's any computer system. We'll have some rough and open wireways to do, make these work. So those bottom three items are in that. We did show the movable equipment already. The road improvement is a, is really, in my understanding, a separate project.
Right.
It's a different contractor, a timeline, clearly different funds. And it seems like we can hook up, have this plan to hook up to the water service that's right there. And if indeed the road does, the water is with, the water service is with the road, we'd have it before this is done, if it's done this year.
And that was a conversation that I had today with Bolton and Mink about the roads with our Robins Island Loss Committee Chair to talk about.
Local option sales tax, you mean?
Yes, local option sales tax with the water line to go onto that project.
Then the only item on there is removal of the Gury and Resin building.
Right.
And that, I guess we could put, that's a relatively small one, we could probably absorb that in here.
I'd move to approve Approach E.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve Approach, Approach E to the council. Robert, you might have to help me here. Can you go to that last slide so I know what we're talking about, please? The one where you're requesting your motion at?
Is it the floor plan or the one with the money?
No, the one, the motion, the action that you're asking for tonight, the three actions.
We, you have to go to the one earlier.
We need to do them all tonight.
Are you talking about the discussion piece, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm talking about the one that has three different pieces.
Well, I think those are just discussion pieces.
So Action One is approved, project planner with any suggested changes, which you're changing to E as in Edward.
Right.
And so then you're holding off on the other two, which is the financing piece and the construction documents. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. So the motion is to approve E as the recommended, Approach E as the recommended construction program. The motion that made in second discussion. Councilmember Plomon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if we do this action tonight, then I assume that will be focused in on, and then we'll see numbers similar to this, but focused on specifically.
Correct.
Project E, hopefully with pencils sharpened.
Additional conversations. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes?
No.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plomon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
That motion does carry, or that, yeah, that motion does carry. Staff, I believe you have your direction. Thank you for your work. Thanks also to the Park and Rec Board. The council is the decision-maker, as we always know, and thank you to the council for a very good conversation in regards to this. The Robins Island Park is a destination area, and it's nice to see that this project is coming to fruition. So thank you all for your work on this project.
Thank you.
At this point, I'm going to call on Councilmember Nelson. We're going to talk about the City Hall site selection and professional services agreement. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I would like to make a statement regarding my conflict of interest involving the Item Six that is on tonight's agenda, the City Hall site selection. On the City Council Agenda Report, it is listed as Block 25, and on Ike Holland's memorandum, it is listed as the Nelson Cleaners Lot. The ownership of that property is Norman Nelson, is the Norman Nelson Estate. My husband is Paul Nelson and is Norman Nelson's son. The Norman Nelson Estate is subject to probate action and is being administered by a personal representative. Estate distributions are unknown at this time. I have disclosed this conflict of interest from the first time that Block 25 was discussed as a possible site. I have disclosed this to the city attorney, the city administrator, the mayor, and city council members. I indicated that I could not serve on the City Hall Task Force during an open meeting when it was set up and have abstained from discussion and action on this item. I will not be participating in tonight's discussion and will be abstaining from any vote. I am asking to be excused from this portion of the meeting to allow the council to have open discussion in their decision process. Thank you.
Thank you. You are excused. I will second what Councilmember Nelson has stated when this first was discussed. The first time this came up, she pulled me aside and stated her conflict, and so she has been very transparent. She's been very open in this process, and I know that this is a difficult decision for her, and I fully respect your decision, and you're excused.
Thank you.
City Hall site selection. Ms., Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the City Hall Task Force was formed by the council on January 22 of this year and has been meeting to discuss site selection for construction of a new city hall. And at this time, the council's being asked to make a final site selection and allow staff to proceed with a professional services agreement for the design and construction management process. So a little bit about the history in this, the council has been considering a new city hall. So again, I want to note that the study estimates that it would cost 95% of new construction costs to renovate, and then we still are restricted by the current footprint that we have. So during the 2018 budget process, the city identified a funding source, which was bonding, for the City Hall. A previous task force worked with Engen Associates, who presented an overview of the site selections to the council at the June 11 work session. The architect and the building committee identified numerous sites for the location of the City Hall, and the council selected two to four sites for the new building from those recommended by Engen Associates, and then held a town hall meeting for the public input, and that was held on June 26 of last summer, so 2018. And later, the team narrowed it down to two locations. At the July 2018 council meeting, the city council voted on the site, but that ended in a tied vote. In January of this year, at the council retreat, we addressed City Hall once again, and as a council, we brainstormed priorities for the new City Hall site, and a second City Hall Task Force was established. The second task force used the priorities brainstorm during the January council retreat as a foundation for decision-making process. We settled on 10 priorities and ranked them in order of importance, and the priorities we are, and I'll list them in ranked order, they included the acquisition costs, internal efficiencies, ample and convenient parking, an impact to the city tax rules, demolition costs, convenient and accessible traffic flow, the displacement of employees, the cost of a T1 line, whether it had high visibility or not, and then it was also asked if it was connected to the auditorium. And I want to note that when we discussed the auditorium and voted on those priorities, one person said that this was important to them, three people said it was not important to them, and two were neutral on it, and so we included that in our priorities. So the task force then evaluated the six different downtown locations based on these priorities. So as you know, the fire station rose to the top of the list, and after the listening session that we had with the public, we walked away from the fire station site, and we revisited the six sites, eliminating all but two sites. So the current sites that we would like to consider is the current City Hall location and Block 25. The task force is asking the council to make a decision tonight based on three site concepts at those two locations, okay? The first site concept is to remodel the current City Hall building. The second site concept is to demolish the current City Hall building and construct a new City Hall on that site, and possibly connect it to the auditorium. The third site concept is to consider the vacant land on Block 25 for construction of a new City Hall. So I'd like to walk through the benefits and limitations of each of those options. Under the first site concept, so site concept number one, renovating the current City Hall building, the benefits that we identified are this: There are no acquisition costs because we do own that land already. There's no impact to the city tax rules because the city doesn't pay itself property taxes, right? There is a T1 line that's already on site. It could be connected to the auditorium, and it's located downtown. And we referenced the location downtown because at the public meeting we had last summer, that was a very hot point, and it was spoken loud and clear that people felt strongly that it be downtown. As a matter of fact, when we were talking about the fire station, folks even wondered if that was downtown enough, so. The limitations of the City Hall renovation is, again, the cost of renovating is comparable to the new building. Again, the facilities study estimated it would cost 95% of the cost for the new building construction. Another limitation is the relocation during renovation. Staff has estimated it would cost us approximately $50,000 to move the furnitures and such, and to relocate our employees, and understand that they would be relocated in current city-owned buildings. So we might have a handful in one location, a few more in another location, more in a different location, which is very disruptive for the employees, and it's also less efficient for us. And it has to happen, they'll be relocated through the whole renovation process, which could be six months, eight months. I think our administrator suggested it might be even a longer period of time for that. It would also be confusing for our residents to know which site do they need to go to. If I want a permit, who do I see, well, where do I go to be able to find the person that I need during that whole renovation period? The City Hall building was originally designed for a medical clinic, and the layout is not as functional for City Hall, and we would be restricted to the footprint that we have right now. There's also limited space for expansion, and it's believed that there is not room for the city council chambers. There's lower visibility, less traffic flow, and this is in regard to comparing it to Lot, Block 25. And there's also limited parking. Right now, our staff has to park, or does park, across the street at the church if there's a funeral or a special event at the church. Of course, they need to find other places to park for that day. So that was the renovation benefits and limitations. The second site concept is to demolish the current City Hall building and construct a new City Hall, and really, these benefits and limitations are very similar, so I'll buzz through them quickly. There are no acquisition costs, no impact to the city tax rule, it's still located downtown, there's a T1 line on site, and it could be connected to the city auditorium. The limitations, again, are the relocation costs during the construction phase, that being the $50,000 to relocate, disruption of employees and inefficiencies, and the inconvenience to our taxpayers in trying to find where they need to go, limited space for the expansion, lower visibility, less traffic, convenient traffic flow, and again, the limited parking. So the third site concept then is to consider the vacant land on Block 25 for construction of the new City Hall. The benefits of that site is that the city already owns the parking lot on this block, which is about half of the space that we're talking about. It is a large site, which would allow us to build whatever footprint we would want to on that site. It would add to our efficiencies, and we would expect that the council chambers would be able to be included at that site. It is located downtown, and actually would create a very nice entrance into downtown. There's high visibility coming off of Highway 12. It's convenient and accessible traffic flow. There's a signal light on Highway 12 at that intersection, and I would note that there are no restrictions as to one-way access in or out of that, as we saw at the fire station, because that really was a major issue for us, and we appreciate those who pointed that out. There's also ample parking with opportunities for green space, and there's limited green space downtown, and then there would be no displacement of the employees. The limitations for this lot is that, or Block 25, is there are acquisition costs, and that, we have estimated the purchase price at $100,000. But quite frankly, when we were looking at that compared to $1 million for other locations that we talked about, that's a rather inexpensive investment when you consider the long-term benefits of that, and again, we already own half of that block. This site is currently on the tax rules. The property taxes that we receive are $2,178 a year, which again, are quite minimal when you compare that to $20,000 that we would have been missing out as revenue from another site that we'd looked at. There is no, there is no cost estimate for the T1 line. I'm sure that would be an expense coming to that location, and because of the location, of course, it would not be connected to the auditorium. So at this time, I'm going to pause, and we have a number of others here on the council that have been involved with this task force, and I'd like to just give you an opportunity to add to anything that I might have missed in my comments.
Does anybody from staff have any of the maps or anything that, do we have any of those available? I have those available to look at it. Can you load those for us as we're preparing this discussion, please? Thank you. Any of the council, or the task force members that are present that would like to make additional comments? Councilmember Mesky?
Well, I think Councilmember Schwantus covered our discussions quite well. I believe that Option One and Two, that's kind of where I was always coming from, that we had to have that to make an informed decision, and some of those numbers were slow coming. The building study has always been there. That 3.2 million has been a number that's always been in our heads, that is the cost to renovate that building to where it needs to be. However, there are additional costs that were not known that now are, and that's why Option Two, the demolition, I think it gives a nice assessment. So it really is going to become more of a question of, do you renovate the old between 3.2 and 4.2, or do you build new for about 4.2 and maybe a little bit more, is more or less where I think it is, because it's almost all given the same. And once, once you've conceded that apparently the public wants the facility downtown, and I mean, there's been a lot of talk that we've addressed with many other older buildings downtown, and those costs are all the same, so we already have an old building. We figured, I guess that was one thing, we could fix our own old building versus another old building, but I think you summarized them fairly well.
Councilmember Osmus?
Thank you for the recap, Councilmember Schwantus. When the fire department location was, came to the top of the list during that site selection process, the thing that appealed to me the most was the acquisition cost. And because we owned that land, we didn't have to pay for it. So what the cost was going to be to the taxpayers really put that on the top. And we kind of had a design idea that we thought would work for that site that was attached to the fire department, but then the firefighters came up with their own design, which was located a little bit differently in the parking lot and not attached to the building, and that would serve their needs better. But then after the community meeting, it was clear that the people didn't want it located there. And it is important that we listen to the public, and so it was back to the drawing board. So then, in our site selection process, as Councilmember Schwantus pointed out, Block 25 was the next site that had the most, what we call, green sticky notes on it, or the most positive points to it. And I was a little surprised when we came back around to the present City Hall location, because I, I thought it had been clear that we were done putting Band-Aids and duct tape on that building. And after the major water leak and the breakdowns in the elevator and the air conditioning and the heating not working, and not to its outdated appearance, I, I thought that that was not a good choice to put, sink any more of the taxpayers' money into it. And I just feel that I, I can't with a clear conscience build for the future, for the next 30 or 50 years, by putting any more money into that present building. So that brings me to Block 25. So after the public had said that they didn't want the new City Hall building by the fire department, then it's, Block 25's the next choice. And as Councilmember Schwantus pointed out, it still goes back to acquisition cost. That was very high on our, a priority for the council. And when we were looking at 1.4 million for one site, 1.2 for another site, $800,000 for another site, to be able to get this location for possibly approximately $100,000, that to me is in the best interest of the citizens and their money, and how we're going to spend that wisely. Block 25 has good visibility, good in and out. It was talked about the parking, which the present building doesn't have. And when the present building is demolished, it will have more parking for the city auditorium and for other people that live downtown. And so I just feel that Block 25 is the best choice that serves the public and serves our employees.
You wish to speak? Councilmember Elrato?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Schwantus and Councilmember Osmus. It's, it's, Block 25 has a lot of, a lot of potential. I've gotten feedback with people wanting to demolish the current building and build, build there. I think we had that discussion in our group also, being close to the auditorium and becoming, becoming part of that, that group. I think our city, a new planning director made a good point about the potential for Block 25 to be the, the living room of the, of the city, and how convenient that would be for us to be able to congregate there as a community, and to plan for openness and meeting space to discuss city affairs. I'm excited about Block 25 and what it has to offer. I like the idea of opening up, I think there's an option that we may consider selling the current building and applying funds towards a new building, or maybe demolishing it. I don't think that's been decided for sure. I think, I think the positive thing would be to move towards building on Block 25, creating that, that meeting space for the public to congregate and discuss city business. So I, I'm excited about that potential. Thank you.
Turn it back to Councilmember Schwantus at this point for additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I want to point out is a $3.2 million figure that is referenced in the facilities plan. That's a correct figure for the, for the facilities plan. In that plan, they also reference the value of building that site in 2018. There was kind of a, an attachment to that that was, this is our utopia, and what buildings we should address in what years, and so it was estimating that we would do that building in 2018. And the figure that's represented then with the adjustment for those two years moved it from the 3.2 to $3,664,000. If you use that same adjustment and you add on another two years for 2020, that dollar amount comes out to be 409,268. So we really.
Four million? Four million?
Nope. Oh.
That's just the increase.
Yes, I'm sorry. I have a zero missing, yes. Four million. Yeah, thank you. So, yes, $4,092,000. And so really, when we estimated the cost of that building at $4,200,000 a square foot, that would be right in the ballpark for where those numbers would come out. So again, if you go back to the cost of rehabilitating, renovating that building, being 95% of the cost of, of doing a new building, we're still right.
In that plan, they also reference the value of building that site in 2018. There was kind of an attachment to that that was, this is our utopia and what buildings we should address in what years. And so it was estimating that we would do that building in 2018. And the figure that's represented then with adjustment for those two years moved it from the 3.2 to $3,664,000. If you use that same adjustment and you add on another two years for 2020, that dollar amount comes out to be 409,268. So we really...
Four million? Four million?
Nope. Oh. Yes, I'm sorry. I have a zero missing. Yes. Four million. Yeah, thank you. So, yes, $4,092,000. And so, really, when we estimated the cost of that building at $4,200 a square foot, that would be right in the ballpark for where those numbers would come out. So, again, if you go back to the cost of rehabilitating, renovating that building being 95% of the cost of doing a new building, we're still right in the ballpark for the same kind of costs. So, if that helps.
Thank you. I'm going to call on our city... Councilmember Elvado.
During our last discussion, we talked about some unknowns with the City Hall in renovating it. And from what I understand, there was an X-ray room or something somebody mentioned. Is that true?
I've mentioned that the city administrator's office used to be the X-ray room. I mentioned that correctly.
Okay. And so there's going to be... It might be a mystery building as to what we're getting into as we begin the process. So it... We would be spending a lot of money unexpectedly when we go in to gut that building, I'm afraid. So I would be cautious about wanting to do that. Thank you.
I'm going to call on our city administrator, Mr. Scott, at this time before we take it to council discussion. Attorney...
Mr. Holland. I'm the city administrator. I said, "City Administrator, Mr. Scott."
Yeah, exactly. I covered you all.
Who do you want?
I want Mr. Scott, our city attorney. Would you like to give us any of a brief, before we start our discussion as a council... Absent Councilmember Nelson, before we start that discussion as far as process?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. I've advised you in a privileged communication, there's a couple of legal issues for you to consider in the event that you ultimately determine that Block 25 is the preferred location for the new City Hall. The first is under your city charter. Councilmember Nelson has disclosed that she has at least a potential for an indirect interest in that property. She does not own it. Her husband does not own it, but the estate of Councilmember Nelson's mother-in-law does own it. And there is some potential, although I understand it may not be likely, that at some point a distribution will be made to Councilmember Nelson's spouse through the probate proceeding that is underway right now with her mother-in-law's will. Given that, Charter Section 9.02 applies. Even though Councilmember Nelson's interest is only a potential interest and is indirect and may not materialize, I did advise her that she had to comply with that section, which she has done by making a full disclosure publicly before the discussion tonight. And I think even previously, she had brought that matter to the public's attention and abstained from participation in any of the preliminary site selection matters. So she has complied with Charter Section 9.02. There's a state statute as well that the council needs to be aware of and consider, and that's Statute Section Number 471.87. And that statute generally applies to prohibit city councils from entering into any contract in which an officer who is authorized to take part in making the contract voluntarily has a personal financial interest. And again, given the kind of complexity of the situation, but the nature of the estate proceeding, Councilmember Nelson, I think, is... At least has a potential financial interest in this matter. It's indirect, again. She is not named in the will in question, but she has, at this moment, at least the potential to have some indirect interest in this property. For Section 471 to apply, if it were to apply, it's not just enough for Councilmember Nelson to abstain from voting. It would also apply to prohibit the council from considering entering into a contract that would benefit her, again, if all the elements of that statute apply. What the council needs to consider, though, is the fact that for it to apply, her interest has to be voluntary. And I think, I've done some legal research on this, I do think there are enough facts here that the council could conclude that her interest is not voluntary. Obviously, it's not her decision or her spouse's decision to sell this property. That decision would be made by the personal representative of her estate. An attorney general's opinion that had interpreted this statute has found that it's significant if the council member in question is able to disclaim the interest in the contract. And in this case, Councilmember Nelson would not have the right to disclaim her interest such as it is. It's not her right to disclaim, it's her spouse's. And again, in any event, the likelihood, I think, is that there may not be any distribution paid and no revenues from a potential sale of Block 25 would ever be distributed to Councilmember Nelson or her spouse. But that's not certain at this point. So with all that in mind, I guess what I want the council to understand is, through an independent process, which Councilmember Nelson did not participate in, the City Hall Task Force identified Block 25 as a... One of two preferred locations for the next City Hall. I believe that the council should have the discussion and weigh the merits of the two sites. And if it ultimately determines that Block 25 is the correct site, is the best site, then I think there's some procedural things the council should do, make some findings of fact to document that Councilmember Nelson's interest is not voluntary and that the Statute Section 471.87 would not apply in this situation. So if, at the end of this discussion, Block 25 is the choice of the council, my recommendation would be that the council simply direct our office and working with staff to prepare a resolution for the council to approve at your regular meeting on next Monday, May 6th, to formally authorize preparations to acquire that site. Certainly, I kind of went into a lot of detail, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have. I do think it's important to make sure you understand the issues and take all efforts to make sure you're compliant with that statute.
Does anybody have any questions? Any of the council members have any questions for our city attorney? Okay, I see our city administrator would like to make a comment.
If there's no questions on that, this is changing the subject a little bit, but I want a point of clarification because a couple of occasions, the council members have indicated that this Block 25 property was $100,000. And that is true, that's what it's listed at when I spoke to the listing agent last week. I also want you to know that the corner lot where the Quonset Hut is, is also available to purchase, and that is $100,000, is what they're asking for that property as well. So you need to factor that in if you were looking at acquiring the entire block. I will also tell you that I have not had time to vet that corner lot. You know, the Block 25 was subject to, you know, a rehab situation where they removed the dirt and then had to put it back in and then have that tested by, you know, EPA. So I don't know what was on that corner, whether there was a gas station or if there's tanks under the ground, or it used to be an old garage, or a nuclear reactor site. I don't know. So we need to check those things out before we make an offer. So just keep that in mind, and I wanted to make sure that the council was fully informed. Thank you.
Okay. So we've heard some comments from our city attorney and also some opinions from our city administrator. It's good to know that the corner lot is for sale. I'd not heard that that was for sale. So that is good news. Thank you for your work on that. And so at this point, I just have one question, City Attorney Scott. So if we... So if it appears we're moving in the direction of the Block 25, so if we wanted to make a motion tonight to direct staff, would that be... Could we make that motion still and then just state that it would be pending the resolution that we prepared and brought to us on Monday evening next week?
Yeah, Mayor, I think you could do that. I think you could preliminarily select the site and direct staff to begin preparations for trying to acquire the two lots you need to acquire, understanding you'll take formal action by resolution in a week.
Certainly. Thank you. Councilmember Mesky.
I was just going to ask about the acquisition of that other lot. We hadn't heard that before. But since I'm talking, I will say also, there's been a fairly aggressive time schedule put in place, and some of that dictated by District Heat, that I want to make it very clear that for the existing facility, that we have a contingency to put a heating system in there because if the idea, the timeframe is not reasonable, we need to make sure that we don't have to relocate our staff a second time. I think the price tag, if I'm not correct, please correct me, Mr. Christensen, if I'm not right, but I think it was $80,000 for the facility.
That's what he said at the last meeting.
And if it's $80,000, then I'm going to echo what Councilmember Elvado said, and that demoing the building after you put in a $80,000 heating system is crazy. We should probably turn around and try to sell that.
Additional conversation? I'm sorry. Public Works Director Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Since the time we talked and I gave you that number, I was mistaking in that number, but I was mistaking in, I guess, what you guys would consider positive at this point. That $80,000 is closer to a total for the two buildings. And we've done further research, and to get us what we would call a temporary heat source, we could put one pump in instead of the redundant pumps that would have been recommended if we were keeping the building. And with one pump in City Hall, the estimate as of now is just over $20,000.
That's much more.
It is in the right direction.
Yes.
Additional conversation? Councilmember Elvado.
So you would put the heat pump in the current City Hall, and then it would heat rather than the auditorium and heat the City Hall?
Correct. Councilmember Elvado, they're two separate systems, so... And with different spaces and uses and volumes of space to heat, we don't want to... You can't combine them. So the heat system or the pump for the auditorium is about $32,000 to do that system. The City Hall, again, would, for temporary, because it's still the recommendation, if someone was keeping that building, depending on the use, would be some HVAC system work as well as redundant pumps. But for one pump to work for a temporary system is in the range of about $20,000. Now, that being said, that pump, depending on the size of a new building, could be transferred to a new building.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwantus.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with others' comments that Block 25 would be the best site. Therefore, I'd like to make a motion to direct the city attorney to prepare a resolution making findings of fact consistent with tonight's discussion to the effect that, one, Councilmember Nelson's interest in the estate property is involuntary; two, that Councilmember Nelson has fully complied with Charter Section 9.02 and the council's conflict of interest policy; and three, city staff are directed to pursue acquisition of the portions of Block 25 that the city does not already own.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So let's talk about Block 25 for a little bit. Number one, there was a soil issue when the laundromat was torn down. Across to the south, you had Torvik Motors. They had a lot of oil, and I'm not sure if there's any issues with the soil there. So if they... Someone starts building or tearing up the soil on that property, it's going to happen. Number two, City Hall doesn't have to be in a location that's visible to anyone. If you're going to City Hall, it's a destination. You don't need location, location, location for City Hall. Number three, that's a pretty noisy intersection, not only cars but trucks, and you got the trains. So what's the productivity going to be on employees? Only can insulate a building so much. For me, I'd rather double up on buildings for maintenance and utilities. And I think what I heard, the majority of the people that were at the fire station, was that like 80-some people, wanted the building...
93.
Okay, 93. I was outside.
I saw you out there, I was trying to make room for you.
Yeah, that was fine. The majority wanted it to be downtown, but like former Councilman Christensen said, why not build it together with a community center out overlooking a regional park? That'd be great for employees and for the general public. Or the other option is to buy the hardware store. It's connected, or will be connected, to the auditorium. You already got the building there, you close on it, you could start remodeling that, and it won't take much. It's a poured concrete tip-up building. I would say I wouldn't pay $400,000 for it, but you could negotiate, and there'd be cost sharing between the auditorium and the hardware hang building for maintenance, snow removal and that. That's my take.
I just want to say, when we considered the fire station, we had a public input meeting, and it was a good thing we did because we found out it wasn't a great location. And I'm just wondering why we're not going to do that now, why we're going to vote on this without considering the public.
Thank you. I would say one of the good reasons for doing it at the fire station is because there were concerns that were shared with us by the firefighters in regard to public safety and their concerns in regard to losing identity of the fire station and things. And it was really a way for us to be able to... I think it was a completely different site than what we're looking at here. We knew that there were some public concerns, people not wanting to mix public safety with the City Hall. We also had a much more difficult time fitting the building onto that site. And this site is an open property. We don't have the stormwater issues, we don't have the tree there, we don't have the public safety issues. I understand there has been an environmental study done on the property that we're expecting to receive back, so that should address the concern that you had there, Councilmember Fagerly. But in the end, we have vetted these properties now very thoroughly. I don't know what more information we could collect to be able to make this decision. And at some point, you just need to make the decision and move on. And that is our role as a city council, is to make the decision.
I'm going to take the liberty to call on Dr. Ramstead, our new planning and development director, to maybe share a little bit what you shared with the committee, or, I'm sorry, the task force in regards to green space and some of those comments that you made at the meeting for us, if you would, Dr. Ramstead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First of all, I think it's great, all the contemplation you've been giving to all the different sites, and the serious consideration you've been giving to all the citizens of the city. Personally, I see the City Hall as a congregation space primarily for all the citizens. As mentioned before, I see it as sort of the city's living room, where citizens come to celebrate the city's achievements, come to complain, come to fight for their things that they want in the city, and come to grieve and come together in times of need. I think a great City Hall is one that has that kind of a space where you can have a chamber where people can congregate before a council meeting and after a council meeting. You can have space outside. It's more than just the functions of the building. If you stick to just the functions of the If you stick to just the functions of the building, and you're trying to make it as efficient as possible, efficiency can also come across as being cheap, and for very little extra cost. If you have a gracious space, gracious corridors, ample room for your council meetings, an empty chamber to the council, and some celebration with some clear-story space, maybe two stories tall, and things like that, suddenly, the graciousness suggests that, you know, this is a quality building. And I think quality is something that you really should be considering when contemplating your new City Hall. Because it's these extra spaces, these common spaces, or these shared spaces, that are really where the social aspects of City Hall will occur, not in all of the little functional corridor spaces and things like that, which is lacking, obviously, in our current City Hall location. But I think I generally kind of talked about those items. Is that?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your comments.
Yep.
Can I just ask some questions?
Yeah, Dr. Ramstead, if you'd stay.
So if we need space, it'd be out at the community center, then? There's over three acres.
Oh. Okay, you're saying if you did the building out in a larger location?
Yeah, two-story.
Right.
City Hall would be on top of the community center.
Right, yeah.
Overlooking the lake.
Right, I'm not-
Green space.
Yep.
Okay.
I am not here to advocate for any particular site.
Well-
But I agree. The more open slate the site, the more options you have. And you can have these spaces where congregation is not only welcome, but is encouraged.
And then you can go and work in the garden afterwards, out there, if you have a lot there.
Yep, yep.
I mean, Block 25, you're looking at the railroad yard, and you're on Highway 12. Truck traffic. I don't know.
Right.
So what you just said to me, be out there at the community center.
Well, if you're looking beyond downtown, there's obviously multiple locations that I think have been suggested for outside of downtown. And that opens up a whole nother evaluation process. But if you're looking downtown by itself, I think Block 25 is the best choice for downtown, if I need to commit.
Thank you for your comments.
Yep.
Additional comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Mesky.
And I'm gonna echo what Councilmember Davis said. And I also, I will echo what Councilmember Swantus said. I think they both make very valid points about public involvement and the decision-making of the council. I think the public should have a chance to respond to this site, as we did with the Fire Hall. I realize the set of circumstances may be different, but allowing that to happen, and in this particular case, if we're not compelled as a council by the safety recommendations, et cetera, then you may still decide to put it there. But if we're truly gonna say, this is the community's living room, and then tell them, we'll let you know how it's gonna be built without any input of where it should be, it sends a mixed message. I don't think it would put the timeframe off too much to ask for that. I know that's not what any, some of those that we've been dealing with for a while want to hear. But that was the process we used for the Fire Hall, is to let the public respond to where we're going with that. I'm willing to concede, looking at the current site, because when I'm comparing this, it truly doesn't save us much to stay in the same spot versus building on an empty spot. But I think the community needs a chance to see that information laid out in the same fashion as well. Because maybe they'll come to the same conclusion, that if you're demoing a building, it's almost exactly the same price as building new on 25. I would imagine if the public had an appetite to move outside of downtown, which I haven't seen that yet, then there would be other spots, and I would concur with Councilmember Fagerly. But it seems to me, if we're following our process, we may want to have a public meeting to talk about this site. Still making the decision as the council. We chose, after we heard from the last meeting, that this probably wasn't the site. And so we said, no. I think we should hear from the public again, and maybe we'll hear a different message. And even if you hear the message and they say, no, if you don't like the reasons, we certainly can still build it there.
Additional comments, Councilmember Plonlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually liking the direction that the conversation's going, because I believe that it's a good option that's been presented. But I also like the results that took place after, you know, leading up to, during, and after the meeting that took place at the fire station. That was, there was some concern, the meeting took place, and we received feedback. And, but we didn't just leave it at that. We took that feedback, and we kind of changed directions. And the feedback that I received from changing directions is that, okay, they're listening to us. The people said, council is listening to us. All right, this makes us feel valuable, and like our input is valid. And that's exactly what we gotta have. We have to have the feeling, because of the taxpayers' building, this is where our city business is conducted. So I like the route that we're going down now, whereas we can take a look at, you know, dive into another space. But it also is accomplishing a couple other things in that we're taking time to consider. And now we're also maybe taking time to get some more public input. I know it takes time. You know, the gears of government turn slowly, but it slows the process down, and it allows that feedback and the input to come back to us so that we may just achieve a result that, we may hit a point where the public says, hey, we're, you know, you're never gonna get everybody. But where the public goes, hey, overall, this looks like a pretty good idea. And then it makes our decision a lot easier to make. And like I said, the feedback that I got following the previous meeting, and then the response from the council, people did like the fact that they felt the council heard them, and that's good. So I think we gotta take that cue and keep going with it. So that's why I'm supportive of Ms. Davis's idea, but also supportive of the current site as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you. I think the public talked in June of 2018. We already listened to them when they said that they wanted it downtown. Just some of the other input, you know, anything different than that that I got from the latest public input one, was when we were talking about that we zeroed in on the Fire Department. They, because of the cost and the impact it was gonna have on the taxpayers, that that brought that site to the top. They said, forget what, forget cost. And I was like, whoa. We don't just forget cost. No, that was a big, that was number-one priority on what we were gonna do. But they said, build it, build it right. But we already had the public input last year, and they said, build it downtown. And so I don't, so let's say we have another public input meeting. Now it's the decision of, really, it's a philosophical decision of, do you build downtown or don't you? They already answered that. There's no other site downtown. I mean, we have, ad nauseam, looked at all of them. So I don't see an advantage to another public input meeting that's just gonna put that process behind that much more towards the heating facility, that we need to put heating into this building now if it gets too much later. $20,000 is a little bit more reasonable than what we were thinking if we go past our timeline. So I was glad to hear that. But I don't see anything that's gonna change our decision to not be downtown.
Ms. Wedberg, do you have any drawings that show some of the green space that we could acquire on Block 25? Do you have anything like that? Or that was one of the concerns that was in the task force that I think we talked about one other time, but we haven't yet talked about today. Do you have anything, or do you have any ideas on that? Or what are your thoughts that way?
Absolutely, Mayor, members of the council. We don't have that particular drawing with those building layouts here tonight. But what I will say is that we have talked, kind of keeping in mind roughly that 20,000-square-foot building's need, that was done last year. And so we've discussed as a task force, thinking just conceptually about the space and the size of the lot, looking at about a 10,000-square-foot building with two stories, in theory. That would roughly be, so Block 25 on this map that's on your screen right now is kind of center, north central there. That single parcel, there's kind of a smattering of parcels on that particular lot. But that parcel that has the parcel number labeled on it, so 950032670, for lack of having the measurements on that particular drawing, is roughly 125 by 80, which is about what the size of that 10,000-square-foot building footprint would look like. With that in mind, that leaves you at the rest of the block for parking and green space, which, I'll just touch, the green space is a needed thing downtown. And we've talked about kind of playground space, green space, whatever that might look like. It is also in the downtown master plan. So we would keep on track with some of those goals and aspirations for downtown from a planning commission. And Wilmer Main Street aside of things, everyone has echoed that staying downtown and figuring out some sort of green space within this puzzle, as well as keeping in consideration parking and our parking needs, are all top priorities of those two particular groups. As for parking on the site, there's adequate space to have both of those needs, that green space and that parking. And from a parking standpoint, you also have the county building and parking lot just to the west of this Block 25. So the eastern portion of that block is 10-hour parking with some 2-hour parking and 15-minute parking for the county during the day. But that would also allow for some of that parking overflow needs for a well-attended council meeting, or some sort of staff training, or anything like that. There's lots of perks of having it at this particular location that you can consider a lot of those different scenarios for this Block 25 site.
Okay, and then I think the original conversations that were happening did not include the WODASH property. I think I'm saying that finally correct.
Yep.
So I'm gonna play a little bit on what you just said. Would that give us enough green space to have some type of a small park structure there with that added space, in your opinion?
I mean, you certainly, yeah, you could certainly consider some sort of playground space or park structure, whatever that might look like. But adding that, that portion of the property onto that site is, I think, only a benefit, because it allows more green space, or more parking, or whatever the council might choose. But it certainly gives you that flexibility of having that entire block and making that a site for the future, future expansion, whatever it might be. It allows for all of that on that site.
And then did you do any parking calculations on that block as far as how many total parking spaces there would be?
Yes. So we estimated without that, just for point of reference, the WODASH property that's being discussed, that we weren't sure if was for sale, are the eastern two most parcels, so the north and south pieces that mimic each other that are stacked, that those are both owned by WODASH. And then the center three parcels that are all vertical, those are all owned by Nelson. And then the west half of that block is completely owned by the city. It's a city parking lot currently. So without the WODASH property, we have about, I think we were estimating about 25,000 square feet for parking space, in theory. We, depending on layout and where your ingress egress is, you have about 150 parcels per acre. So you'd look at, you could probably get 50 to 75 parking spaces on that site. That's kind of being generous on the numbers. You might be able to squeeze some more on there as well. And then, again, keeping in consideration that you've got even more overflow parking with that county parking lot just to the west.
Thank you. And then I have a question for somebody from staff. I don't know who can answer it, but is that, one of the questions we asked in the task force meeting was, is, have we heard anything from QuickTrip? Does anybody have anything about QuickTrip? A city administrator.
I spoke with their real estate representative last week, and he expressed to me that they have plans to build a new store there in 2020. We talked about, would he be interested in our block on Highway 12? We do a swap? And he said, no. The parcel that they're inquiring is actually smaller than they usually purchase. And so that, the one that we were offering was even smaller. We talked about Highway 5, would he be interested in that? He said, they may build another one, a fourth store on Highway 5, but they are determined to build a third store downtown. And they had no interest in selling. And, you know, I praised him for his store and told him I was a regular customer, and I think that they will do well downtown. So I think they're a good company that we have in the city. And so I think that building on Block 25 adjacent, across the street from them, will be a good start to the rebuilding of the downtown, and also, you know, the hub of the Charis Hospital. Having that convenience store and the City Hall there, I think will add to the aesthetics of the downtown and possibly encourage future growth and new building. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I have Councilmember Plonlin, and Councilmember Osmus, and Councilmember Alvarado, but I think I forgot to cross the two of you off. So Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're being asked a task to build a building for 30 to 50 years. We want to do it right. And I believe that opening it up to the public, letting them share their thoughts, and then moving forward would be the correct way of doing it. Do I want it yesterday? Sure. Should I have been here yesterday? Probably. But it's not. But now we have, it's our task to make sure we think this out well. And we've got 20,000 citizens in Wilmer. And those that are interested will contribute and share their ideas. And we will learn from that. We learned on the Fire Department, and I think we'll learn from this experience. I think before we pull the, you know, chain on this one, we give the public an opportunity. And I don't know that, maybe we have beat the horse, but I don't think that's, we've gotta do this right. And I think part of that process is allowing the public to be a part of it. That's my thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Mesky.
I agree with Councilmember Osmus in what she said. But I need to know, it doesn't, I don't think it will be just a philosophical conversation. I think when you would do it, not the Fire Hall meeting, but the one before, did you actually present the remodel of the current site at a $3.6 million cost, or a demolition of the current site at a $4.17 million cost? Because to me, that is the conversation that I believe should have been the first conversation when we were talking about the philosophical difference between remodeling what we have and building a new facility. Did those conversations happen, because I wasn't there, when you did the first meetings before?
To my recollection, somebody that was there, I know Councilmember Osmus was there, Councilmember Alvarado was there, Councilmember Swantus was there. I think Councilmember Davis was there as a citizen. I do not recall those, that specific conversation. I think if we're headed in that direction, I think that we need to get some direction on that, on what you want that to look like. And then we also need some cheerleaders to, you know, put the materials together. And, you know, we're talking, you know, it's always easy to ask somebody else to do the work. But if we're asking for this, then we need to be willing to step up and do the work, and then show up at the meeting. You know, I know Councilmember Osmus had a meeting that evening, that I think you were the chair of the meeting, actually. And after that meeting, that ended quite late, you still came over to the meeting. So if we're gonna have this, it's- So if we're going to have this, it's, as someone told me, it's easy to ask other people to do work and commit time, and then not be part of it. So I think if we're going to do that, we need to commit to being the ones that do the work. I kind of mentioned this at the last task force meeting as well. You know, I've been at every one of the meetings, and I just looked at my calendar now, I'm booked all week. I can't do anything this week. I don't have any time this week at all to do anything. And so I was kind of trying to say, well, could I move this around, or move that around, move the other thing around? But I don't have any time this week, which then puts us past the next council meeting, which then puts us in additional, puts us out three weeks then. I do agree that that is not critical. It's not a critical time juncture, particularly with the favorable report that we just received. I mean, we had a pretty firm number last week, that it's going to be $75,000 or more. And now tonight, we're here, and it's going to be $20,000. Well, that's, that's, that's a considerable difference in price. I'm not near as concerned about $20,000 as the $75,000 or more. So that's a favorable report. So I think if we want to do that, I mean, we have four council members saying they want to do that. Do the four council members want to put the work into it that's going to take to make that happen? That's the question. Because I know up to this point, Councilmember Osmus, Councilmember Schwantus, and myself have put in a yeoman's amount of work. And I wouldn't even want to start adding up the hours that I've put into this project up to this point. And I think I pale in comparison to the other two. Of course, they're chairs and vice chairs. I understand that, so. But I mean, are we willing to put in, if it takes 30 hours to put that material together between now and the meeting, are we willing to do that to make that happen? That's the question. Additional comments? Councilmember Schwantus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This probably is not a very politically astute thing to say, but research says you should not ask a question that you do not want an answer to. That's why this does not sound good, right? But really, here's the real question. Having the public meeting, will it change your mind? Will it make a difference? And if not, then you shouldn't ask the question. If you believe that you do not know the answer yet, then absolutely, we should have that public meeting. But if you feel confident in your decision, then you should take the vote and move on. But it's not a good practice to ask a question when you already have an answer, and you don't really want to know what the public has to say, so.
I'll just say that Fire Station, I personally felt that I had the information I needed. The public told me I didn't have the information I needed. Mike Reese is out in the public, and he pulled me aside, and he's one of the first people that brought up the issue of the divided highway to me. And I said to him, I said, what are you talking about? And he took me up, and he showed me the drawing, and he pointed it out in the drawing. And again, I mean, we hadn't saw that before, we didn't have the opportunity to review that before, but until he pulled me aside and took me up there and showed it to me, as soon as he said that to me, I mean, he no more than turned around, and I walked over to Councilmember Schwantus, and I said, we have a problem. And, you know, so that was a public input piece that was brought to me, that really changed my mind on just one piece that really swayed my decision. But, you know, I mean, we've got the time to do it, but do we have, as Councilmember Schwantus said, what more do we need for answers? And we should write out what we want, what we're attempting to get here for an answer. And then if that's the case, then who's willing to put the work in to make it happen? And as council members, we're supposed to be equally dividing the work, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Schwantus.
I will withdraw the motion for Block 25, and I would recommend that we hold the public meeting, because I believe that's what this group would like to do. But it does put us back in time, but.
Councilmember Osmus, are you willing to withdraw your second to the motion?
I'm not going to change my mind in the end, but I feel confident with this site.
And I, in my earlier statement, I said that I couldn't, with a clear conscience, put any more money into the present city hall building to remodel it, knowing that that's the taxpayers' money going to waste. I mean, I couldn't do that. Even, even if we couldn't change the mind of some of the citizens, that that doesn't fiscally make sense. Realistically, it doesn't make sense. And I just feel that that's my job, to protect the city's money, and to spend it wisely in the best interest of the public. So I know I'm not going to change my mind either, but I also value public input, and people feeling, having the opportunity to have their voices heard. So I will withdraw my second, but I don't know what additional information we're looking for. But I will withdraw the second.
That's the last item on our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So we'll.
Second. We adjourned.
Wait a minute. That was a mistake?
That was a mistake.
Well, I suppose we could look at it and say that she was fairly married. With the outside chance, she might look $8,000 or $1,000.